All this meeting of the Cedar Falls Board of Education to order and to tell you again that our mission statement for Cedar Falls Community Schools is to educate each student, all 5,334 of them, to become a lifelong learner and a caring and responsible citizen. And we have the agenda before us and is the, can I hear a motion that we accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Susie?
Second.
Second by Susan. Any questions?
I'd just say since we're approving it officially, I did not go check bills.
Um, I did, they called me.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
I've been busy.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. And I'd like to welcome our legislators, Senator Danielson and Representative Kressig, and thank you for taking your time and coming tonight to visit with us. And I know you're in the off-season. We were never in the off-season here, but...
Twenty-four seven.
About the whole series is over, you're getting closer. So, I'd like to have you help us start tonight by telling us what you foresee, the state of the Assembly and upcoming issues, and particularly regarding education and economic, financing.
Good. Well, every good senator differs to their Iowa...
There you are. You're younger man, and you're left.
I'll kick it off. I work for him. I know last session, we had a very lengthy debate on supplemental state aid, or what we used to call law of growth. And for some reason, there was a compromise made, and I'm sure you all are aware of it, 1.25 and 55 million in one-time funding. The bad part of that was Governor Branstad vetoed that. And I think with that veto, there's a little bit of mistrust that is going into the next session. In particular, legislators worked to come up with a compromise and felt as though it was a compromise that we could all support and ended up getting vetoed. And, you know, I know you guys all realize and understand kind of where you're at. We were supposed to have sent a law of growth 30 days after the governor makes his speech. And we didn't even do that last session. So, I think, you know, from your perspective as in the education world, the challenges that you face is, one, knowing for sure what the state of Iowa was going to do when it comes to funding. And we haven't done a very good job of that of late. And it's causing significant problems for school districts that are really struggling with student enrollments, decline in that. So, I think that that in itself is going to be, hopefully, something that we can come up with. You know, the governor makes his State of the State speech, he'll make it on the 12th of January. Thirty days after that, we're supposed to address a law of growth. I'm hopeful. I do know that people in both parties are beginning to see the evidence of the need. I had an opportunity to tour Southdale Elementary with your boss over there and saw firsthand the impacts of how here we got Southdale Elementary, a fairly new school, and it's already full. And some of the things that I saw in that setting were, especially children with special needs or have an individual education plan, were in a classroom setting that, you know, it'd be one classroom, a lot smaller than this, and they would be all partitioned off into fours. And here's these teachers trying to help these kids. It just wasn't really a perfect setting for education. So, you know, in Cedar Falls, we're growing, we're seeing, what do we have, 144 students in growth? And so, you know, those are good things, there are challenges. I know you guys got some challenges with trying to deal with the infrastructure within the state. But I'd also to say that the anti-bullying piece, that one I found very interesting, particularly how it was defined to not support it. You know, I think the governor did a, like, decree or special document, executive order, that would have put it in at the University of Northern Iowa, which, you know, is a good thing. But I do think that, again, funding is going to play a role. How is that going to be funded going forward? I would say, and Jeff, I'll let him take over here, but, you know, I'm sure you've all heard that in the past, the state has broke. Well, folks, it's not. We're in, we're, fiscally, we're probably one of the top three states in the country when it comes to finance. So, we have, we have the resources, we had the resources last session to, we could have done a 4% of law of growth, but that wasn't agreed to. And so, I really, I really get a sense that we could do something. I don't know if 4% is going to be the number. I've heard 3% could be a possible opportunity for us to come to a compromise and agreement. And hopefully, we can do that 30 days after the governor makes his State of the State speech. It's somewhat frustrating that the state legislature, who addresses and sets laws, is breaking the law when it comes to providing adequate funding for our schools. And so, I just read today Gladwood-Reinbeck, you know, they're, they're having some serious, and that's kind of a district that, you know, our rural areas are struggling. And, you know, it'd be nice to make sure that in those settings, that they have the resources. And, you know, I, I don't know what the average age of your textbooks are in, in, in the K-12 setting here in Cedar Falls, but they need, you know, if they're 1995, they're probably out of date. And, oh, by the way, that costs money. And so, you guys need resources to... The other one, I just, Jeff, I'll let you go here.
Oh, you're doing just fine.
Is, one of these things that I have worked on over the years and really have gotten a lot of education on is mental health. I'm sure, I know for a fact that in the K-12 setting, mental health issues show up. And we're ending up with teachers that probably need some identifying skills to define the mental health issue as it occurs in the K-12 setting. And we need to do a lot more on that issue, particularly to help you folks be able to, you know, I, I just can't, I used to, at Deere, I used to do training there, and I'd have adults in the classroom. And you know what? Every once in a while, I'd have a disruptive adult. And you'd have to say, alright, that's enough. But with a teacher that has a young student in there that may have some mental health issues, I'm sure it's a huge challenge to try and, you know, meet the needs of all the other students and then also of that, that one child. So, not all gloom and doom. I, I'll tell you, I'm going to go down there and work as hard as I have in the past to make sure that the funding is there and it's in a timely, timely fashion.
Very good. Thank you, Bob. You did a great job. I don't serve on either of the education committees. Haven't since I've been in the Senate, in part because there's been capable members of my own caucus who get those assignments, lifelong educators, and folks that have had a nexus with it. But I will just share a couple of observations. I consider this area the education capital of Iowa. When you look at our strong local K-12 public schools, including Cedar Falls, our parochial schools, and then the leadership the University of Northern Iowa provides. So, some of my colleagues in the Senate are getting tired of me saying this, but I think all roads lead to the Cedar Valley, if you know where to look. And education is certainly a policy area where that's true. So, I don't serve on the education committees, but you've got the next best thing. Bob and I are both roommates with the Education Budget Chair in the Senate, Senator Shane John, who himself was a 30-plus-year teacher and a University of Northern Iowa alumni. So, we get his ear at night when we get home, and that has been valuable in terms of what's going to happen with the budgeting piece. And he's fought hard to make sure those resources are available. Bob gave kind of an overview. I like to look at a five-year window. I would argue that in the last five years, you haven't seen this low of a year-over-year effort to the K-12 schools in decades. Two years of zero, last year of a percent and a quarter, the other two years nominal. At the same time, our state's budget has been one of the healthiest in those five years. So, something's out of whack when it comes to education with a capital E. We're here to talk about K-12, but you can run the whole gamut of education that we deal with in the capital. Something's out of whack. It's not the Iowa that I knew when I grew up, it's probably not the Iowa that most people here knew. And I hope we get back to it soon, because you all have made decisions over the last five years with those budget realities and done as good a job as can be expected with reserves and other decisions, but it's going to come to a head. And we can't have another five years like this. My sense is that the governor's veto, since most Iowans are not aware of that five-year window that I just described, most Iowans, though, did pay attention to that veto and saw it as a veto on education. And I do know that in coffee shops and other meetings around the state since then, there are those who believe that it has hurt. And people who weren't paying attention to the education funding issue now are. And I think you're seeing that signal in some of the new leadership in the House, who says that education is going to be a priority, something they want to tackle early on. I'll be looking for reading between the lines to make sure that that means an adequate level of funding. It's one thing to do it early, it's another to do it right, and to actually provide those resources. The overall budget picture is not as strong as the last couple of years. You should know that I'm Vice Chair of Appropriations, and I also serve on the Fiscal Committee that meets in the interim when the set, when we're out of session. And we get periodic updates on our revenues. There's a date you should put in your calendar, mid-December, I think it's December 15th or so, December 10th, somewhere in that second week of December, the Revenue Estimating Conference for the State of Iowa will give its estimates for next year's growth for the state budget. By law, we have to use that number when we create our budget in order to meet the balanced budget amendment. So, that number will be very important, and I think it'll be less than what we have seen in previous years, in part because commodity prices are down. People have done some interesting accounting over the last couple of years to still keep farm income strong, but that's coming to a head. In addition, our own expenditures on the property tax reform bill, basically the property tax credit, will create some budget stress. Although, you, you should know that it isn't as bad next year as it had been the previous two years. We're already through the bulk of that policy being implemented. So, if people are using that as a reason to say they can't do education, you should call a timeout and say, give me your math on that. Because the property tax piece is fairly nominal in this next year, but, you know, we're still going to have to come up with some of those resources. All that says to me, though, if you look at other periods of Iowa's economic history, even in the mid-'80s, when there was significant budget stress because of the farm crisis, local schools still got higher percentages than they're getting right now over the last five years. So, for some reason, previous generations of Iowans have found a way to dig a little deeper and make sure that their kids, no matter who their parents are or where they're from, get access to an equal and quality education. And I'm hopeful that we can get back to that conversation. But wanted you to be aware a little bit of the budget picture overall, and maybe a sense that people have figured out that, that we do need to pay a little more attention to education. That's at least what I'm getting in the coffee shops. The one other macro-budget issue that cannot be ignored is the Medicaid line item. So, the governor has currently proposed to privatize slash modernize, whichever word you want to use, the Medicaid program in Iowa, which is a $4.2 billion program. That change is going to be implemented in January. Almost 20% of the current spend is going to be reallocated, either in management fees for the four private HMOs that are taking over the operations, roughly about $600 million, and then another $200 million in beginning savings this year and some out-year savings. They're talking about $51 million right now into Medicaid line item. So, guess what? There's significant uncertainty when we go into the next session over that. And because education competes for any of that new money as we allocate the overall budget, you all shouldn't, and I don't think can, ignore the Medicaid conversation. Historically, since I've been there, we've estimated roughly 20 to 100 million in expenditures for Medicaid that we would address throughout the budget year that were uncertain. So, any given year, we would look at our Medicaid line item and we'd say, okay, based on what we know now, we think the worst-case scenario is 20 million between now and the close of the budget year. Some years, it's been 100, especially during the Affordable Care Act turnover. So, we're going to go into this scenario again with a complete redo of the program with one of our line items that's the largest and the most unpredictable with added certainty. There is no way that cannot affect the education discussion, and I think you need to be aware of the macros on that. I'll help you as we communicate, as we always do, about what Cedar Falls' individual needs are. And I also represent the area of Waterloo, Hudson as well, and we'll always calibrate with you on what that means. So, keep in touch. That will also create some constraints on what the governor can propose in the first 30 days, even if he does that. So, challenges, yes, but when you look at some of the previous generations and the challenges they've had, I think it would be hard to say that, you know, we're in any different position. We should invest in our kids and their future, and K-12 schools are the primary way to do I would say that the tone and tenor of the session will probably be worse than previous years. I can't tell you how frustrating it is to work five months on a bipartisan compromise, by the way, to work five months on a bipartisan compromise where the topic was, education. It wasn't a secret, that's what we were trying to resolve, and to not have that honored with Republicans in the House and Democrats in the Senate. And I always try to find a bipartisan compromise where one can be had, and I think the one-time funding provided some relief. And those of you that were paying attention to the conversations early on, it was pretty bleak. So, I thought it was worth it to spend another month and a half and try to come up with that. But, you know, if the tone and tenor isn't more positive as we begin the session, I think that's going to be very difficult to try to grind out another five or six-month session. The one positive that I would point to, and I think there's some local interest for you as well, is the change in leadership in the House. I worked very well with Speaker Paulson, this is no critique of him. But like any organization that has new leaders, there's new opportunities to work together and maybe put some of the other stuff aside. So, the House certainly has that dynamic, and I think we should pay attention to it and encourage Lynda Upmire to know what the Cedar Valley needs are as the new Speaker. And then in particular, Chris Haggenau, who is a native of Cedar Falls, is now the majority leader. And him and I have worked together well on a number of issues. We've never had a reason to kind of sit down and sort through education stuff, but we do now, because he's a Cedar Falls kid. And I think he should be on your shortlist. Christmas card might be too strong of a lead, but maybe not. But I do think you should reach out to him and let him know as leaders here in Cedar Falls that you're thankful that he's now a leader in the House, and that you will do everything you can to put him in a good position to make a good budget decision relative to education, and hopefully that leads to some increased investment in K-12. So, I've already spoken to him, he was at the UNI game this weekend, but him and I speak periodically anyways, because we work on some other issues. But take advantage of the fact that he has local knowledge. He was a Cedar Falls kid, he went to NU High, but his parents still live here, and he has a nexus here in Cedar Valley. So, I'll kind of end with this and then offer some questions if you have some. I think that's an example of, you know, that we're in the people business. And quite frankly, too many people forget that in politics, because we like to focus on the conflict. And while that may be exciting and sells papers and gets people gimed up on the TV and AM radio, for the most part, you do have to focus on the people that you're working with and understand why they can get to a yes and why they can't. And it's our job to be bridge leaders and to help people get there. So, that will be my pledge to you. Whatever your priorities are should be communicated strongly to the capital, we will do that. We'll do it in a way that if there's a chance to get a bipartisan compromise again, we'll certainly be in the middle of that, trying to sort it out. That is something that I hold dear about being a Senator and having the ability to do that across the aisle. And so, we'll, we'll certainly give it a go. And hopefully, we can come up with a better year than we've had and certainly start to get back to the kind of Iowa that most people expect when it comes to investment in education. So, look forward to working with you on that and happy to answer your questions.
Let's open this up for some questions. I'll start it with, I know some discussion last session, I don't know where it ever ended up and which committee, but we're knowing that the local option tax, the save tax, is sunsetted out to 2029. And we're very interested in hoping that that could be extended.
Right.
And which would allow us to bond out for that. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I actually, I actually filed a bill on that. The House filed 118. And it basically eliminates the sunset. And I know that that's what was requested by the Urban Education Network, I had heard that from others on the board, and, you know, the barriers that it caused, especially when it comes to funding of projects. And so, I worked that issue, and it got to the Ways and Means and was not taken up. And I've talked to other legislators, Republican and Democrat, to... So, that's one of the areas that, you know, because it's a two-year cycle, the session, that bill's still active. And, you know, we can adjust the bill, you know, if you want to extend it again, or if you want to, my sense is just to get rid of the sunset altogether, it's less, it just makes, simplifies the process for communities. So, that bill's out there, and it's still alive round, so let's get to work on it.
So, Bob, I beg your pardon. So, in the real nuts and bolts of Des Moines, is it then just appropriate for us as a board or us to direct IASB to go speak to whoever stopped it in Ways and Means?
I think it would be, yeah, I do. It's, Representative Sands is the chair of that committee.
To be one individual, not necessarily the whole committee, or...
Well, I think it, you know, I think the more people you talk to on that issue and explain, again, like I explained to them, you know...
What was the resistance? Did you ever get a reason why they didn't extend it?
Well, I think that, well, I'll just be honest with you, it's probably one of those issues that, you know, they don't necessarily like to mess with the tax code all that much, although we've done significant changes within the tax code of late. So, you know, I think that's a good question to ask them. They never really gave me an answer, and I guess they don't have to. You know, they can just not give me an answer, and that's basically what I got out of leadership on the Ways and Means Committee. But I think it's worthy of your time to reach out to folks from within this area that are serving in the majority in the House. And, you know, I think it's helpful to talk to the Senate, too, in the majority, and, you know, make sure they understand what your intent is. And, you know, it isn't just a Cedar Falls thing, it's a statewide thing.
Was it one of our legislative priorities last year?
It was.
I think it was.
It was one of our legislative priorities. One of UEN's legislative priorities.
Yeah. I followed the bill based on that priority. I talked to Andy, Dr. Patti, and so, I think it makes sense. It provides a little more predictability in the, in the process, especially if you're going to go on bonding, and, you know, you have a short number of years left, they kind of look at you and say, well, I don't think we're willing to do that. Where if you, if you had that ability to build projects and use the bonding system with predictability and with getting rid of the sunset, you have predictability there for, for that process.
So, I'm a yes.
Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm a yes, and I don't think it's rocket science. If it's good enough for casinos, it's good enough for schools. So, I floor managed the bill that did exactly what you're asking for schools that we did for casinos, and there was some evidence to do it. First of all, it drives up costs to put the bond in jeopardy every eight years. We all pay more for that. And you've got your first vote, you've got some due diligence along the way. After that, those follow-on votes have passed overwhelmingly, and for schools and casinos as well. So, we argued a couple of years ago, why would we do that to ourselves? All your due diligence is there, all the accountability for the voters, if they don't see something they like, there's still ways, you can actually do a reverse referendum in Iowa under county code. So, we actually changed the very same law that you're asking for, for casinos, about three years ago. So, to me, it's not rocket science. And if you're voting for people to be good fiduciary stewards, it's a no-brainer. What is your argument against it? So, I'll advocate for it again.
I'm afraid, too, as it gets closer, it'll become a bargaining chip.
Everything's a bargaining chip.
Well, I know it is, but even more, even more so.
Unfortunately, they, yeah, I agree. Anybody in that chamber, there's 150 of them, can jump up and go, wait, wait, don't tell me, here's what I want. So, but in this case, use some strong evidence. It drives up costs. It adds zero accountability to the voters in the out-years, because they're passing overwhelmingly anyways. And, and you haven't even accounted for the indirect costs of the referendum votes and all the other administrative work that it takes. So, to me, I think it's an outdated law, once you've got your initial vote and your upfront due diligence and the ability actually to come back if something goes wrong. Certainly have that under reverse referendum language, so... And, and I also think it's important for legislators to know, and you should tuck this into your argument, that almost all the other local entities have, have a form of local control, and they can, they can adjust to things. Schools do not have local control in Iowa. We have local school boards, but they don't enjoy the constitutional local control authority that other governments do.
Yeah, under...
Dillan's Rule was actually an Iowa judge, by the way, who set that precedent. So, Iowa's kind of an enigma. The judge set the precedent that you had to ask for permission. And then we also then implemented the strongest constitutional language, so we've got both theories that are operating in Iowa. But, so you need to make that case. We need the legislature to act, you know, because we're constrained in the school districts by the lack of local control, which then doesn't give you other options, which other cities and counties and everybody else has. So, there's two really strong points there. The financial piece drives up costs, and you have the least ability to adjust, and we must act at the state level to give you some of that authority.
And I think another comparison, Jeff and I have been working on an issue relative to local governments, cities, with regard to using their reserve funds to, right now, they're pretty restricted on how they can invest those reserve funds, and it actually is costing them money because of the, you know, if they were to be able to invest it outside of those restricted funds, they'd see more return back to the taxpayer, and they could pay. That fell on deaf ears, too, in Iowa legislate, in the House in particular. I know, I think you got...
That darned House.
You got that darned House.
In the answer I received, Jeff, because I asked that question quite a bit with legislators this, this past year, was exactly what Susan was saying, that there are some other entities for infrastructure needs that would like to have those funds at least expanded in the future that can go maybe to roads or maybe go to other infrastructure needs with other governing bodies across the state, that there are some concerns that maybe they need to explore that deeper instead of just saying it's going to go to schools. We advocate strongly, it needs to go for schools, it needs to continue to go to schools, but there's always those other areas and people that are advocating for their own areas.
Our job is sorted out. Make a silk purse out of silk.
Make a silk purse out of cells.
What can we do to support you guys? What can we do to help you? You guys are great advocates for schools, for education, for the Cedar Valley. What can we do to support you?
Well, I think, I know that over the past few years, you've brought folks down to the Capitol. I think that's a significant benefit and, you know...
Didn't really feel like it last year.
What's that?
Didn't really feel like it last year, but we came.
For you guys, it didn't feel good for you guys.
We don't know if it made a significant difference or not.
Well, you know, okay, so you come down for, you come down for a meeting. You know, the dialogue doesn't end after you leave from the meeting. You know, it may be even worthy to change, exchange cell phone numbers or, you know, send them an email and thank them for their work. And we appreciate the time, but here's our, we need to get this done. And I think the other one is, you know, specific issues to the school are kind of hard to convince lawmakers that aren't representing your district. And so if we can look at issues like this removing the sunset, explain to them why that's so valuable and important. But, and then the other one is Ron Jorgensen. He's retiring. This is his last session, he's not running again. I think it's a real opportunity for us to reach out to Ron. He's the State Rep from Sioux City. He's worked with the community college out there. Sharp guy, I think he knows and understands. And then also, and Jeff I'm sure would concur, his leadership will set what they call targets. And targets don't always indicate what legislators want. I've seen that over the years. They create these targets and they're ridiculously low. And then that's when the horse trading starts. I think that's when the Senate leaves. Okay, well, that may be, but it's, so I think that there's some real opportunity...
What do you mean by targets?
That's our budget number.
Oh, okay, okay.
So like the governor will, he'll release his budget. And then the House will set a target number based on specific things like corrections, education, you know, environmental things. And then the Senate may have then come out with their own set of targets that may be higher or lower, just dependent on where those are at. So, and then they feel almost committed. They feel as though that they're committed to those targets. Even the chairs of the committees will do that. And in private conversations I had with them, I've told them, you know, those targets are ridiculous. They're not even, you know, and they agree, but I've got to kind of honor what has been asked of me to do. So here's why that's real. So last year, the Senate and the governor were at the 99% spending limitation, which is a law. That's why we get great grades around the country for our budgeting processes. And the House Republican targets were at about 94% of allowable revenues. So they came up with a new definition of what's fiscally responsible. What that means then is there's a couple hundred million that historically in Iowa would have been available for education, healthcare, job creation, all the stuff that we do, that was no longer available. So I think one of the things that you can do to help us is calibrate a little bit on that homework. And we'll help you, you can reach out, you can give me a holler, I'll give you the up-to-the-minute, you know, what we're talking about in terms of the numbers. And like I like to say is calibrate your BS detector. And when you hear that that's not available, though, well, you know what? The law actually gives us a little more room and it's been fiscally responsible for decades. It's actually what Governor Branstad pioneered in the 80s, the current spending limitations that we have. So that's really been the challenge. There's two completely different formulas for what's available. And there are those of us that believe that fiscal responsibility means knowing what to say yes to in terms of the investments, not just saying no to all of it. And there's a real tension right now in the Capitol about what that means. And I think if you do a little bit of homework, you can be pretty capable in any conversation in the Capitol and go, "Well, wait a minute, if you're using that definition, that means we really aren't going to get our resources." That's why we were there for a month and a half. And I just would add another... And that's not picking on anybody. It's not being partisan, you know? If we had friends from the other side of the aisle here, they'd tell you, that's their definition. And they're going to defend it. But I think it's up to all of us to go, "Why would that change, given, you know, 20 years of good budgeting practices?" And also, it's not really what you've been saying, is you've been out campaigning and doing the things that you want to do. It's kind of a new formula. So that's what we have to deal with. That's the reality of getting through the budget in that five months. And just to add a little bit more to that is in the House, in the Ways and Means Committee, they have a proposal that they haven't necessarily come out and told everybody. Maybe you've heard some of it, it's called the flat tax. And the proposal is, is that they'd introduce this flat tax that basically would set a, just a flat tax rate. And then we would still have the traditional taxing options still available. So if you can about imagine how, what predictability is of that. So if people do the flat tax, you know, how will that, well, that would have an impact on the budget. And if they did the traditional, then we kind of have an idea of where that's going to go. So I don't have a sense that the Senate is probably interested. I don't know yet, but that's going to be a discussion you'll see in the papers this year. I tend to focus on the outcome. So whatever your reasoning is, what's the outcome, right? And right now, the outcome for local schools is not good. So whatever that explanation is, you know, I think we need to up our game and be Iowans again when it comes to K-12 investments. It's almost like a farmer eating his seed corn, right? They don't do that because that's next year's revenues, that's next year's growth. Well, really, investment in K-12 is our seed corn in Iowa. Those are our kids who are going to go on to be successful. And you have to invest in that, that's not rocket science. And you guys are doing a tremendous job. You actually have a good problem. Most school districts do not have this problem, growth. And you're trying to manage that and communicate it to your voters, who are also, you know, getting a whole lot of other messages about what to do. So I just think it would be helpful if the state would be the strong partner that it has traditionally been. That's why the law said we should set our education funding within the first 30 days. So that you knew what that priority was going to be and then the rest of the growth in revenues could be talked about. It's also why we have a one-room school on our state quarter. You know, we're proud of our tradition. But you can't maintain that tradition when you're eating your seed corn and not investing in it. That's where we are.
I have a question. What was the opposition to the governor's request for a two-year budget for education?
Well, it just, and let Jeff answer too, that there were concerns, particularly like the HHS budget. There's, how do you set that, especially when we had issues with Medicaid? You know, funding each year comes in where we need additional revenue resources to meet those needs. And I think there were those that, you know, when it came to education, if you look at our region's schools, that's an issue that if we get a two-year budget that underfunded, let's say you and I, it's fairly devastating to that school. Right now, you and I is asking for additional monies and they need it. And so, and that's a year-to-year concept, depending on enrollment and those things. So now we did establish two-year budgets in certain budgets that, you know, the ag budget, I think they established a two-year budget on that. But then there are other areas that, like we've been trying to share, are critical areas. Areas that are critical to say in two years out, we can identify what those needs are going to be for two years. You know, I've said this before, you know, when you look at budgeting, we do three things. We educate, and this is at the state level, we educate, we medicate, and we incarcerate. And those three areas are the majority of our budget. Probably 90% is the number. And things change. I think the governor's request, they tried to meet his needs. I think actually the second-year budget, they did a 55% number. But that meant that you had to come back in and look at it again. You know, if it actually is a better way to spend taxpayers' money, you know, then let's do it. But I can just tell you, in the correction system, and I've been actively engaged in that discussion for several years, I just had a meeting today. We significantly underfund the correction systems in Iowa. So we're going to set a two-year budget and continually underfund those systems. You know, I think those were some of the real struggles that we faced going into that. And, you know, if we were funding education at the appropriate numbers, maybe that's something to look at. So it's a good question. In the Senate, it's not a question. We passed everything within statutory requirements. But the legislature is made up of two independent bodies, the House and the Senate. So as much as I'd like to, I can't run over to the House with Bob's colleagues and put them in a headlock and say, "Hey, pass the education budget within the statutory authority." Can't do it. The Senate passed everything within the timelines, wanted to engage in the traditional budgeting process. We'll do it again next year. Hopefully our House counterparts will join us. And then, so process-wise, there's no question in the Senate. In the House, I think they wanted wiggle room towards the end of the year. Which then you need to ask, traditionally, we wanted to signal what K-12 was going to get. That's why they should be first. And this is a fair question about why you would want to change that. Maybe that's the question that predates whether you're going to do the funding or not. And then if you look at the deadline, it's also, most people don't realize, you do, that it's a two-year vote. And it's one of the biggest ironies in the Capitol right now that when the governor took office, we changed Iowa's budgeting practice from one year to two-year. And we used the school example as evidence to do it. And in the Senate, I was one of the leaders to help change that budgeting practice, agreed with it. It's a better long-range planning tool. And it's an absolute irony today that the education law, which has always been for two years, is now in doubt. And we don't question the brand-new change that we gave to the state budget for the governor to be able to have two-year planning process for himself. So to me, even on the merits, there's no evidence for the argument. We know that you can plan better when you have a little longer horizon. And then you can get to the question of what should be the priority. And I think K-12 has always been, at least in the code and in Iowa's minds, the priority. So I don't know if you've got a leg to stand on. And people are getting kind of tired. Yeah, actually this year in Des Moines, we should be setting the 18 supplemental state aid. We're going to Des Moines to set the 17. And it's just exactly what Senator Danielson said. So I'm sorry, but the law is a law, right?
Maybe there needs to be consequences to breaking the law for you guys. I don't know.
Well, I'd be, I'd be just fine.
I can take the lighting test and pass it.
I'd be just fine. The Senate has met every deadline.
Are there parliamentary things you can do, like you don't begin until you're in compliance with the law, stuff like that?
So if you remember, five years ago, we went all the way till the last day of a government shutdown potential in Iowa. In fact, we went, we finished at about nine o'clock at night, midnight would have been the shutdown. The number one issue was some education policy relative to our homeschoolers. So we've been there, Doug. And there is a point at which Iowans still want things to work if you can't resolve those differences. And I will always avoid shutdown scenarios and parliamentary procedures that heighten the conflict and put us into a tailspin and then confirm everybody's biases that, you know, government doesn't work. So in good faith, I will stay at the table as long as it takes to provide the resources that we think are necessary. But at some point, you have to have elections outside of the building. You have to have people who have an awareness of what's going on. And so I've been as consistent as the day is long on this. It makes good Iowa sense to do education funding early. It's also the law. We also have had the money. So at some point, those of us in the larger community got to go, enough is enough. And maybe this will be the year. We'll see. But that's a give and take. I'm not a fan of constitutional brinksmanship. In fact, this issue in terms of the overall expenditure is about a third of the Medicaid privatization, which was a unilateral action, $4.2 billion program in Iowa. And your question, we could have led down that path too. But to be quite frank, in the last five years, there's about a dozen examples of those kind of actions. And we have one, two Supreme Court cases that said the executive branch was unconstitutional in their actions and it didn't matter. Programs were closed, people were fired and the money was shifted somewhere else. So...
Any more questions?
Join us, join us on this journey.
No, I just, thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thanks for being here, thanks for your passion and certainly your focus on education. We can't thank you enough for that.
Absolutely. We serve at the pleasure. It's good to be here. I got the boss over there too.
We can convene this meeting, the OP on universal.
Interesting learning concept, you know? Coaching people up. Thank you. Absolutely. On the board of the board, I just would offer that, reach out to me and let me know what your thoughts are, ideas. I'm looking forward to the capital. Working on my impromptu spiel.
Okay, next we have public comment. Any requests? Good. Moving to the secretaries' financial reports.
I have a public request. I don't know how that works. Is this, I'm totally new to this. Public, does that mean anyone can say something that they would like to?
What happens?
Or do we need to be kind of officially on the docket?
On the docket, yep. About four o'clock in the day of, we always ask people just to request to make sure that they're on the docket. And then that way we can get them on the agenda and then get them up to the public comment. So I will see you all in two.
Okay, we have up on the screen the financials for the month of October. And you'll see in the general fund, revenue for the month was $10,588,272. You'll notice in the general operating specifically, a little over $10 million. A big chunk of that was we received our first half property tax draw from the county for the, for the school year. Unfortunately, we never, don't normally see numbers that big on the revenue side. But the other time will be in April. On the expenditure side, you can see expenditures for the month were $4,231,416. So we ended up with a fund balance at the end of October of $12,471,632 rounded. So then you can see the breakdown of where the amount in the checking account and then the different investment accounts that we have for those dollars. There is the cash flow for the general fund. You can see that we're basically running very similar to where we were in 2014 from a cash balance perspective. That's down a little bit from where we were last school year, obviously. Uh, that's down a little bit from, uh, where we were last school year, obviously. And in the management fund, we're running very similar to where we were running last year at this sign, and this time, again, that is a planned, uh, drawdown of our resources in the, um, management fund. For a schoolhouse, uh, for the month of October, uh, revenue from the one-cent local options, uh, statewide sales tax, excuse me, three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, eighty-five dollars. Expenditures, we had one small bill for nineteen-hundred-sixty-five, and the rest of it, the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-two goes into the, uh, debt service account to make the, that we applied towards, uh, debt payments. So, our ending balance was eight million, two-hundred-two-thousand, three-hundred-ninety-nine dollars rounded. And again, you can see, uh, where the amount of money is in cash and where the investments are. You'll note that, uh, our unrestricted is five million, two-hundred-seventy-one-thousand, thirty-two dollars. Uh, that would be, uh, immediately available should we need it. Uh, physical plant and equipment levy, again, we received, uh, um, one-half of our property tax draw this month, so that's the one million, three-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, two-sixty-five for revenue expenditures, uh, two-hundred-one-thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine for any balance of, uh, two million, five-hundred-and-three-thousand, nine-fifteen rounded. And you can see where the dollars are invested and what's in the checking account. Debt service, there's the transfer in of the two-fifty-two, five, uh, excuse me, six-seventy-three from the statewide, uh, one-cent sales tax, and a little interest on that. No expenditures yet, so our fund balance is one million, twelve-thousand, six-twenty-eight rounded. Uh, we make our first debt service payment December first. Student activity, uh, revenue one-forty-six, nine-oh-five, expenditures of seventy-eight, two-oh-seven rounded for a fund balance of, uh, six-sixty-nine, two-seventy-nine rounded. And you can see where, uh, again, where the investments are. Food service, um, a nice month, two-hundred-and, uh, twenty-five-thousand, thirty-seven in, uh, two-eighty-six, two-two-two out, so our ending fund balance of three-ninety-seven, four-nineteen. Uh, it's, it continues to slip a little bit, but, uh, on the positive note of that, uh, our participation, at least for the month of October, was up fairly significantly. So, the things that we've been doing to try and offer second meals at the elementary schools, um, again, an increase in the amount of pizza bills that you saw this month, um, also would have a little bit to do with that, as we're continuing to try to work within the, uh, new USDA guidelines for, for, uh, that operation. And in the student, uh, coffee shop, you can see they have a revenue of twenty-two-eighty-two and expenditures of just under twenty-one-hundred dollars. So, there, there we have a fund balance seventy-three-oh-two in their account.
And so, they made money?
And with that, I would entertain any questions at the board in my hand.
So, the coffee shop made money?
Yeah, it, it's, uh, it's increasing its fund balance. Remember, we're a nonprofit organization.
Gotcha.
Revenue exceeded expenses.
Right.
Got it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, uh, this report will be placed on file for audit.
Thank you.
And communications, Mr. Flancher.
We are in our final week of the student food drive long haul. Next Monday will be the final closing at the food bank. On our trunk-or-treat fundraiser, we had a great turnout a couple weeks ago. Raised over five-hundred cans, um, the community brought over five-hundred cans, and we raised around two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars on top of that. So, it was a great turnout for trunk-or-treat. Um, this Wednesday on Veterans Day, we'll be, we will be holding a Veterans Day assembly to honor our servicemen and women, as well as having a bake sale for the Veterans Day. And the proceeds from that will go toward the Veterans Park expansion, um, the phase two, which is all privately funded in Cedar Falls. Um, and then, later in November, we'll be holding a couple bake sales, and they will be going to Mrs. Carter, um, a great secretary at our high school who, uh, just recently suffered a brain aneurysm. So, that money will go toward her and, you know, and her medical expenses, you know, by the holidays are coming around. So, that's later in November. And then in sports, um, cross-country a few weeks ago, uh, the men finished second in the state and the women's team eleventh. And then this past weekend, we had a couple more state competitions. The women's swimming team finished seventh. And then the CF cheer team had the, uh, a state competition, and they participated in three separate events. And in two of them, they placed third in the state, and then in one other, they placed second. Um, and then tomorrow, we have volleyball team playing Cedar Falls Kennedy in the first round of the state tournament. So, great showing for, for CF in the state tournaments, and, you know, continue that tomorrow, hopefully, with volleyball.
I think it was Coach Markerson's last, um, me, too, wasn't it?
Yeah.
For a long time.
Yeah. Very coach.
Forty-seven years, I believe.
Long time.
Very neat, very neat.
Game Smart, too, is that?
Yep.
So, the big question is, are you going down?
I'm not. I can't, I can't miss school tomorrow, but...
Good answer.
That's not a bad thing to hear, so...
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you.
Good job, Michael. American Education Week. We have, uh, Jim and Cynthia Reiter here.
Good evening. So, we are here to make the proclamation. Whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality, and?
Whereas by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for and access to a protected future, and?
Whereas all education employees, be they teachers, counselors, student, teacher librarians, paraprofessionals, school secretaries, custodians, nurses, maintenance and ground personnel, technology specialists, bus drivers, food service, building principals, and business services, human resources, district administrators, school boards, substitute teachers, who work tirelessly to serve our students and communities with care and professionalism, and work together to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students.
Whereas schools are community linchpins, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders and elected officials in a common enterprise.
We therefore, as representatives of the Cedar Falls Educational Support Professionals and the CFEA, do hereby proclaim November sixteenth to the twentieth as the ninety-second annual observance of American Education Week. And I'm gonna open your pack if you have the history of American Education occurring now. So, it kinda goes back to the origin of it. And the piece that I laid out on your desk, um, each year, Hans and I have written something to do. Last year, if you remember, you had the long chain of, um, pieces. This year, you used a recipe, uh, kind of theme. Next year, I'll look at the seed corn, since Scott requested you do that. But, um, I, I hope the cookies were okay. Um, but, um, you know, I should've talked to Adrian's office to find out how many people we have in each one of these categories. And I know I leave people out every time I create something like this, but, um, we have so many people that impact our schools on a daily basis. And, you know, I think at the end, we're trying to serve not only our students, but the parents, but our community as well. I know NEA often uses, it doesn't matter what zip code you live at, our students, and I, I heard you say something tonight during the facilities meeting that talked about that, and your boss says something about it. Same idea, it doesn't matter where we live, all of our students should have that access to quality education, and doesn't matter what their street address is or their zip code. So, um, and that's our presentation, so...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know next week, we are out of town for our annual, uh, board convention, then you will be in attendance at several of your activities.
Good. Thank you very much.
Can I say something else, Jim? If that's okay. Jim had even thrown out, last year, I think it was just boys and I went down with members of CFEA and, and, uh, CSCEP to, uh, Des Moines. He threw it out this year as well to, to see if we can go down as a group together to advocate and, and really push for some of the educational changes, and really appreciate that leadership from, from the entire organization. So, thank you for all of you guys for that, because I think that's great to be able to do that collectively and have that collective voice.
I even said, we should probably do something jointly with our legislators at this kind of club as well. I mean, we try to do our own, we'd be better if we did something joint, um, so that maybe we could get more people involved, you know, in our, our education community within our buildings, but, uh, I, I think we need to, that more solid front, commit that common voice, I think it has a strong impact.
So, there's a good chance this could look different next year because of that collective voice, which I think is a great idea. Very good idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're gonna, uh, hear about the application for modified allowable growth. Mr. Nefter.
Uh, this is an annual application that school districts made, uh, to the School Budget Review Committee. And the application consists of three parts, of which Cedar Falls qualifies for two. And I've thrown the, uh, application up on the screen so you can sort of see it. The fir, the first piece of that is, uh, actual enrollment increase, and you can see that our enrollment increase was a hundred-and-forty-four-point-eight students. And you take that times our district cost, uh, per pupil for this year. And so, you can see that the maximum on-time, uh, funding, which is sort of an acumen, it's actual authority, um, amount that we're, we would be asking for is the nine-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars. Uh, the second part of that is for open enrollment out. Uh, as you can see, that we had twenty-nine-point, um, uh, nine students that were open enrolled out this year that had not opened and enrolled out last year. But because that number is smaller than our certified enrollment increase up above, uh, we don't qualify for any, uh, request for supplemental, uh, additional authority. So, that's why that is a zero. And then the third piece of this is, uh, for, uh, limited English proficient students that have been in the program more than five school years. And, uh, we had, um, a very small, um, a number of that, a point-two-two weighting, uh, times the six kids that qualified for that, and so that's another eighty-five-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. And so, what we would request, uh, to the board, whoops, a little picky, you need to see that, that, uh, we would, uh, have that, uh, have petitioned the School Budget Review Committee, uh, for the nine-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, three-ninety-four plus the, uh, eighty, um, eighty-five-eighteen. And I'll picture the motion for that.
Your motion?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for increased allowable growth, for increased open enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction beyond five years for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Doug. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
And next, we have the special ed administrative cost request. Doug?
And I'll walk through this quick also. Um, this is a copy of, uh, information that we, as the fiscal agent for the, uh, River Hills Consortium Program, send out to all the member schools. And what this does is it calculates the special education administrative cost per student. Uh, in co, Iowa code, it's very specific that school district cannot, uh, you, apply or, or qualify for special education expense for administrative costs with two exceptions. One of those exceptions would be the operation of a consortium-type program like what River Hills is. And so, uh, what we do is we calculate the administrator's salary with, uh, FIC, um, without FIC and IPR, and divide that by the number of students attending River Hills as of October thirty-first, and that, you can see what that comes down to. It's the twelve-hundred-and-five dollars per student. Cedar Falls has ten students in that program this year, so you can see our total request is, uh, for fourteen-thousand, fifty dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, I think the, um, paper had it misquoted at a hundred-and-thirty-thousand or something like that, but it, really Cedar Falls portion of that is the fourteen-thousand, fifty dollars and ninety-two cents. What will happen is, we've asked all board members, or all the individual school boards, excuse me, within the consortium to, um, if they so choose to apply for that request, we'll gather all that data, and so, and Cedar Falls submits the request on behalf, all the school districts that apply, we will submit that request on behalf of consortium numbers, so the SBRC is not inundated with thirty applications, just one.
And do you have to hear from all of them, then?
Um, they have a deadline of, um, the end of December to get, have their boards approve those motions and get them sent to them.
Otherwise, you leave, otherwise you leave theirs off?
Right.
I got you.
If they do not, when I go online to quickly submission and say, "One school district didn't do that," then I would, I would delete bare amount from the poll.
Okay.
Who is the administrator?
Pardon?
Who is the administrator?
Uh, Mike Lonn, he's the building principal at River Hills.
I was just gonna say that, that, just for new board members, the, uh, the background on this, this is a consortium. Uh, we contract with the AEA, it's their building. All the costs for the building actually go through the consortium agreement, so all the districts pay for those cost, that cost for that building, be it upkeep, maintenance, um, the day-to-day, uh, cost for heating and cooling. And then all the staff that work at River Hills are actually AEA employees, and we just contract with the AEA for those employees. So, they're not our employees, they're not underneath our contract, they're not underneath our salaries. So, but they're just part of that, that consortium agreement, uh, because they've been through that program, they've worked at that program, and they're A, A, AEA employees. So, I'd, hopefully, that answered your question, Jim.
Watched him know who it was?
Yeah, Mike Lonn.
Mike Lonn.
Yeah, I mean, he works for the A, he's been there for quite a while.
Any other questions? Not, do I hear a motion that, uh, to that effect?
I move that the Board of Directors of Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for special education administration, administrative costs associated with the River Hills Consortium Program for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year.
Thank you, Jeff. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Second by Susan. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're here, a public hearing for the Southdale Classroom remodel. You direct us there?
But, uh, Mr. Chandler and, uh, Mr. Brokeay will walk through the plans and specifications for the upcoming project, and, um, and we can talk about... That's when you went, Dan?
Uh, yes, please, Doug.
There we go.
Thank you very much. So, good evening, everyone. Um, I'll walk you through the, the project that, uh, we're currently undertaking here in Southdale, uh, so you can get a, your bearings here. Uh, existing front door, come in, turn left. It's the first two rooms on the left here that we're working in, as well as, uh, restroom, workroom, mechanical, and, uh, an existing, well, workspace. So, we're coming in, taking out all the, the existing cabinetry, existing coat hooks, et cetera. Uh, the district's already taken out the asbestos that's on the existing structure that's there, so that's gone. Uh, coming in, new carpet, new VCT, new ceilings, uh, new cabinetry along here with a sink and dislocation here right next to the door, which has become the standard for the district in this particular building. New cabinetry in this existing workroom, uh, replacing exterior hollow-metal doors that are original to this building with new aluminum, so that the existing ones are kinda showing their age. Paint doesn't hold them together anymore. So, um, that's what we're doing here. Gutting the existing restroom area, going in and creating new ADA compliant restrooms, new toilets, partitions, et cetera. Also in this project, back in these two existing rooms, we are creating a, a timeout room right here, um, so that, uh, we can get that issue taken care of within this building as well. So, uh, other work outside, um, because the original doors are approximately two-and-a-half, three inches above the concrete, uh, platform slabs that are there, we're replacing the concrete here, getting that up so it complies with ADA standards, and then replacing existing concrete in this area as well that's, uh, fallen into, uh, disrepair, et cetera. So, Mike, would you like to talk about HVAC and electrical?
I'd love to talk about that. Um, what we did on, back in the, the main project, two thousand and eleven, we did geothermal. Okay, this, this school building is all electric, so it was a perfect candidate for geothermal. So, what we did is we made provisions, when we did the north wing, uh, last couple years, we had provisions for piping. Well, we, now we're extending that piping into these two classrooms and putting in geothermal units. We're taking out the electric heat and putting in geothermal. Uh, we're also replacing the, the, I'll just say, T-12 lamps, which is very inefficient, and we're going with all LED fixtures, which has become a school standard, or district standard as well. Uh, we're also carrying that through the, the corridor, um, yeah, right down there is gonna be all, all new lighting as well. So, yeah, that's kind of the extent of it, but hopefully it stays some energy.
Um, additional work down through the corridor here is we're replacing all the ceiling. And the district in the last project purchased the VCT that will go into this area as well. And the existing, the, the VCT tile that was asbestos-bearing has been removed and is, uh, will... So estimated total project cost of $435,080. So any questions?
The district will throw an additional contingency amount on top of that, as I normally do. We do have one very, very small area of asbestos in the closet that we need to deal with during spring, spring break. We're pulling the number, getting quotes on that, and of course, we'll add that to this project when we get done. We're guessing that that's gonna be in that 15,000 to 20,000 range to take care of that little area. And so we'll add all that to this and we'll get a final number.
And Southdale is guaranteed to be done after this.
It better be, because, because next summer will be my 10th summer and I've been associated with a project, I've been building every year since I've been here.
Fully air-conditioned and everything, right?
It's not that I don't love Southdale, but I'd like to put my attention at the other eight buildings in the district.
All air-conditioned, everything will be touched after this, so.
These are the last two that really have not had anything done to them.
There are some buildings that still have their original, what, 80's finishes in it?
Yes.
I guess would be a good way to describe it, but they are all air-conditioned and the building will be 100% climate controlled after this project.
And I think I've asked this before, but will the whole building be geothermal then?
No.
There's one section that isn't, right? That's what I thought. Okay. That's what I thought.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I, any other questions? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the plans and specifications?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education approve the plans, specifications, and form of contract and set November 23rd, 2015, 7:00 PM, as the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2016 Southdale Elementary Modeling Project.
A second?
A second.
Second by Susan. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Great job.
Next, our superintendent's report.
Just a couple of different items. ISAB State Convention, November 18th through the 20th. We will plan on being, meeting down there on the 17th, the night before the conference, and with some times and locations to be determined, but we'll plan to be down there on the 17th. I think we start writing early on the 18th. November 23rd, board report, we'll have a STEM conversation and update regarding some of the STEM projects that we have going on across our district. Just as an FYI and reminder, on Thursday night of this week, we have the STEM.
Festival?
Festival, thank you. I was drawing a blank on the name. The STEM Festival in Waterloo at the Fife Sullivan Brothers Center. So we certainly invite everybody to attend that if you're able to.
Any questions or comments from our board members?
I guess I have a question about the conference. We had talked about, because the only reason I'm asking is because we need to get something, but are we going to meet before or after on Tuesday down in Des Moines? And do, if we are, then I need to get some things put together.
We're planning on being down there on the 17th, that night.
Okay. So do we want to get together, besides dinner? Are we planning to meet in one of the rooms like we have in the past? Are we just going to just do dinner?
Yeah, I would say probably just we'll go and have a dinner and meet the night before and then go to the conference.
So I don't need to get, I mean, we've had beverages in the rooms, so Joyce, what do you want to do?
Probably not.
Okay. Sounds good.
And dinner plans are at 7:30.
7:30, okay.
I know that might be late for some.
Okay.
Dinner at 7:30.
7:30, all right. Sounds like a plan.
At a secret fish house.
A splash.
Instead of, instead of Italian this time. So, okay. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.